This time we'll call the Tuesday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis and myself, Jack Willie are your county supervisors. Alisa Smith is our county auditor and Bjorn Beck is her right-hand man. Luann Gopi is our administrative assistant and David.
Maybe you want to mention Jack for a little late, we apologize for that, but we had economic class.
Yeah, and David Dryer. We did have visitors from Bellevue School here this morning and they came in and we were able to answer a few questions about what our duties are now they're going to the clerk of courts office and county attorney's office to see the court system and how it works, so. It was nice to see them and I hope they learn enough to not go to the court system in another way. Okay, David.
I got a quick agenda, just two permits here today. First permit is for Laverne Wine Shank in Bellevue Township, section twenty. A Class D field entrance on the south side of two hundred and sixteenth street. It's been reviewed by Roger and we recommend approval of that one. And then the second permit for Kevin McClyman and Tatum Moore, section twenty-five, a Class D field entrance on the east side of three eighty-sixth Avenue on the east side of the road. That has been reviewed and also recommended for approval.
I would move to approve and present.
I moved and seconded to approve the field entrances for Laverne Wine Shank and Kevin McClyman. All those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carry.
The only other thing I have to add is that Miles Bridge, Day Labor Bridge, east of Miles is complete.
Great.
Bridge on a Hundredth Avenue will be complete shortly, they're removing forms and starting to clear up the site, so the property owner can get into his field on the west side of the road there, one hundred and eighty-eighth Street is complete, Bridge at Lux Creek is complete. So, and they're proceeding with piles and back walls on the bridge southwest of.
And.
You see the one north side, does that Lux Creek up there?
Yes.
I see that that was all seated when I went by.
Yep, yep, hold on.
The day labor bridges that we're doing, did they, did they have your fixes on them prior or do you know?
I believe they did.
And we're doing three?
Yes.
Are you in the list with the bridge out here for the trail? At Hurstville?
I've not had any emails or discussions on it, I know they're waiting to have it trucked in.
And some of the wires there need to be taken down.
Yeah, yeah.
And so like, I know we approved it for a minute, probably three weeks ago, I'm just.
Well, I seen the pole, the new pole is there. I don't know if I've seen a pole there, but I never seen no bridge yet.
You'd probably see that.
If I'm understanding that that's part of the trail, Parks and People Trail money and has to be disbursed or completed by the end of the year.
It has to be paid by the end of the year this year.
So, who are we waiting on? Is we waiting on Trader? Are we waiting on the bridge or we waiting on?
That's the question, I mean, we don't know.
Well, isn't the conservation?
I can, I can talk to Alex and see if he's got any info on it.
Okay, that'd be great.
But the trail, so doesn't Nathan know anything about what's going on either?
It's, it's like everybody's waiting on somebody else to do whatever and this is.
Took almost half a year to get that colored for that one on the far east. Yeah, so it could be just the steelwork it takes.
I think the bridge is finished, but but they need to have a permit there to unload it.
Yeah.
And when they unload it, the wires need to come down because they're going to change something there anyway. So it's kind of, it goes back to the power company when they can get the mines down and everybody move in, but. I will send what Alex knows and let you know.
Thank you.
There.
Okay. We don't have any visitors, I believe. Okay. Bjorn says you're next.
Morning.
Good morning. I am here today to talk about courthouse network cabling project. We've discussed this for a few years now and kind of budget this year to hopefully get this project done. I reached out to five contractors, had three walkthroughs and two return bids on the project. Just so everybody knows, it's just for network cable and it's not electricity, electrical work, so. We had two bids come back, one was from Stickley Electric, who would be working with Communications Engineering Corp. out of Cedar Rapids. His bid came back at a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for his work. And then the second bid I received was from SCI Communications out of Des Moines. And his bid came back at forty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy cents.
Forty-nine thousand, five hundred and one?
Forty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-one.
Forty-seven.
Seventy cents. The biggest difference, I mean, obviously you can tell the big price difference, but Stickley and Communications Engineering Corp. Talked about running conduit everywhere in the ceiling, so that really skyrocketed the price, I believe. In the long run, that's probably a safer bet, easier to run cabling in the future if you ever need to. However, with that price difference, I don't know that.
Peaceability.
Yeah, I talked to SCI here about, kind of about that and said, do you run a conduit at all? He said, no, they're just skyrocketing price. He says, we have a twenty-five-year warranty way back.
I thought I read lifetime on here.
Limited lifetime on certain, certain things. But there is a twenty-five-year war, twenty-year warranty on the com scope cabling, then they had another five-year warranty on to all their work as well. But like, if a clip would break or something like that, then they replace that with no problem.
And they have done.
Checked with him. They have done some other counties in the state and I've also checked with those counties, they're very happy. Instead, any warranty work that had had done was done, no questions asked, basically, and it didn't matter. The work would be done at nights, so we wouldn't interrupt county business during the day. He said that they would be about a month and a half out from being able to start and then take approximately three weeks probably to do everything. They would be moving a bunch of equipment in our back room to a different location, so.
We don't have any room with these tight players.
No, no, we're only going to move it about six feet.
Or maybe they're just temporary.
And with that being said, I would like to discuss then, if we're going to move all of this equipment to by the window. Either we're going to have to paint the window, we're going to have to put something on the window or take the windows out. I guess there's going to be, if I understood right, what Bjorn told me, there's going to be these tubes.
There'll hopefully be one conduit that brings down all our wiring and.
On the north wall?
I said the south wall by the, by the glass.
Be better server equipment.
Oh, in that little room?
In the little room in the back of the office, yeah.
And you can't come down on the west wall?
Um, no, because you'd be going in front of the door. Further west wall, there's cabinets there.
But there's a solid wall, right?
But we can enclose that window without any problems, can't we?
That's either we're going to have to paint it or put some kind of a covering because it, it won't look good otherwise. I mean, that door is locked, only employees of the auditor's office have keys to it for security purposes, because we also store ballots back there. So, that's just a, a future we're going to have to consider.
And the reason why we move it is currently our wiring cabinet, like I said, it's on the other portion of the, of the that room, so we have table and run all the way around the room right now and it's just a rat's nest.
And that was basically a suggestion from or recommendations, recommendation from.
Myself and him, I would, I would say, just so everything's in one area.
So, I'm taking, when you say networking, is this basically fiber?
No, we, we would be moving our fiber that comes into the building, but networking would be it's where all the computers plug in, everybody's computer plugs in to get back to the main server.
So, what is it? What kind of wire are we talking?
Cat five, cat six.
Cat six. So, does that, just thinking outside the box here, does that, would that fall in parameters for ARP money for infrastructure? Not, or fiber optic type networking? No, then we could have the, yeah, I, I just feel like like it's, I don't know, is that something we want to pursue?
I mean, we can check into it, I guess, we're, they're going to say is no.
Well, and that's the thing, I mean, if we can save that money for something, another project, I don't know that we could do, I don't know. Just a thought, I don't know what anybody.
I guess you could check it out and see what they say, and if they say no, we'll just proceed in a different direction.
We did, we did budget for it. But if, again, if we can use the budgeted money for another project, then we're further ahead unless we have better projects that we want to use the ARP money. I don't know, was that a possibility or a thought? Let's check.
We can check any of it, see if, yeah.
Yeah. Otherwise, are you looking for action today?
Yeah, looking for approval so we can get signed into a contract with him.
Get on their schedule.
An agreement and get on their schedule. It's to be done before June, June thirtieth, so.
I make a motion to approve it a little bit.
I would second that with, with the stipulation that you check into the. Funding.
Okay, we have a motion in a second and you said it was STI?
SCI.
SCI.
Communications.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carry. Thanks Bjorn for all your work on that. Luann, you want to come up? Did you want to address the board today?
Yes.
Oh, well, you can come up as, as a citizen, you should have yelled at me.
Right.
I was looking, I was looking on the agenda to see if you were.
Well, I, I should have called it in, but I didn't know how many ducks are going to be, since it's a nice day, then I decided not to duck out today. This is just a follow-up, I'm representing the Jackson County Energy District. And when, when we did present to you, for those grad students from the University of Iowa, they've been doing some work, they were in Springbrook last weekend, they went around and canvassed every house to see what energy needs were, they're trying to do something for small, small towns. And I know that, that they've gotten all of the, the county bills and everything for the different places that they're going to be looking at for solar. But at that time, Bruce and I presented to you and it was in a work session. Anyhow, we asked for, for you guys to partner with us for half of the grant. That we're, we're, we're paying ten thousand dollars to the University of Iowa to get those kids to work here. And I didn't do it the right way and Luann chastised me and she was correct.
She's good at that.
Oh, yeah. But anyhow, we had a five thousand dollar ask in, in that meeting and then you guys said you were going to work on it later, so I'm just double checking to see if if you ever brought it back up again.
It seems to me we did set some money for that you, I can't remember what the amount was that we set, but we were looking at various projects that they might do for the county. And I know one of them was out at the Lime Kilns and another, a couple other places, but I'm sure that we can come up with some of the money.
All right, just, I'm just double checking.
Sometimes you have to do that.
I don't remember if we did allocate for the, I mean, were they ever going to study the county home, the other buildings here and see what energy of it was effective? I thought we did.
Max, off the top of my memory, I'm thinking it was either thirty-seven fifty or five thousand.
I was thinking it was a five thousand.
I think it was five thousand too.
I do.
I think what we did is we took the fifty thousand, wasn't it in fifty what they originally asked for was fifty thousand and.
We only asked for five, yes.
But I think Dave Hare, when we were visiting with Dave or Nick, wasn't it, if I remember correctly, and I think, it just seems like it was Dave. And there were how many cities?
Different project though. I think that the, the energy project is different from what the.
But they're using the students from.
It's the ISU or whatever.
The IIS, SC.
It's the, it's from, right, from the university.
Yes.
That are doing these various projects. I know they're going to be doing some work at the Historical Society on taking some of the books and putting them on, on, on websites and I know there can be stuff down there.
We only allocated five thousand, if we did, then that would be all that we budgeted for, if, if you participate here, then you wouldn't have it would be outside of a budgeted item.
Some reason I just thought that we budgeted X amount of dollars for just a solar type project to even study the new jail and we got the.
Well, we, we asked if they could do that by looking at the floor plan and they said yes. And we talked about maybe looking at some of our other buildings to see if that would be energy efficient to at least consider it, so.
Right, after we, we met with you guys, I took them out and we went into the maintenance shed out by Springbrook so they could see what one looked like and out there. And then they, they've gotten who, who's supplying energy to all of your maintenance sheds to see if that would be efficient or whatever to put solar panels up there to cover part of this stuff. But, yeah, I don't know anything about that, that other deal.
I've been in contact with them, after you had come in, I've been in contact with several people. And I gave them a list and one of the, one of the places that I thought that probably would be a good idea would be down in Sebula at the.
The camp, and that's on their.
So I gave them a, a detailed list of a nine-one-one address and, yeah, so.
Yeah, I worked with you there.
And I sent that off and I've had several emails concerning that.
But I still don't know if we're talking about the same.
Oh, I guess, and then we'll have to do some research and then get it back on the agenda that's.
We will do that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a point of clarification, are you asking for, how much money are you, are you asking for half of the ten thousand, I guess, just to clarify?
The Jackson County Energy District, no, the Jackson County Energy District, we, we, we went in for ten thousand. But then when, when we started doing all the, all the stuff, then we asked the supervisor to partner with us and to take half of that.
So, it's, it's still a total of ten or, or is it a total of fifteen? You're still allocating ten and will you want us?
No, no, we, we said we, we'd raise ten thousand and give it to them as our portion of the grant. And then what I'm asking you guys to do is to backfill off this five thousand. So we would be equal partners in the grant, since we're doing a lot of stuff.
So you renewing on your original.
And I'm a city customer, so I can do that.
Well, we will further discuss it and we will make sure that we get you back on the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Luann. Now being joined by Luann Gopi, our administrative assistant.
Good morning. Calendar is full this week, what a surprise, the week before a holiday. Fifty PM this afternoon, Jack needs to be in Muscatine for a workforce CEO meeting. Six o'clock tonight, he's got a Zoom meeting with Jackson County Economic Alliance. Also at six o'clock tonight is the Conservation Board meeting in Hurstville for Larry.
Also, Tom, I really appreciate them sending us the material.
It's a lot of good information in there.
Yeah, there is. Yeah, I like when you have them on site that there's Zoom available too, they can see the recording, but.
And I'm not sure that's an option tonight, she, she seemed, didn't seem to think they would be, so. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, November seventh, everything is happening. Eight thirty in the morning is an Isaac Supervisor's Executive Board meeting by Zoom for Larry. And at nine o'clock is an Iris meeting, also by Zoom for Larry, who's Larry sits on that board, but either one of you can attend that meeting, it's on all your calendars. At three o'clock that afternoon is the Compensation Board meeting, which is either in person or by Zoom. Four o'clock is the ECIA Executive and Council and ECDC meetings, these are all in Dubuque for Jack. At six o'clock Wednesday night is the Together We Build Building Committee meeting that was postponed, I believe, from Monday. And at six thirty that night is the Macocan River Watershed Management Authority's Water Monitoring Results by Zoom and Larry is on that board, but anybody can attend that meeting and you're all registered for that. Thursday, November eighteenth at seven AM is a Bellevue Hometown Pride Meeting by Zoom for Mike. Followed by Housing Trust Fund Meeting by Zoom for Mike at nine AM. And at two o'clock that afternoon is RTA's Special Meeting by Zoom for all of you, and I believe that's supposed to be a very brief, short meeting. Friday, November nineteenth at seven AM is the Hope of the Leadership Meeting by Zoom for Larry. And from noon to two that afternoon is the Coqueta City Retirees Reception at City Hall for all of you.
And at three o'clock that afternoon is a special meeting of the mental health region. We had some, something that Robert Young emailed to Luann or to, what's her name?
Lori.
Lori, but she never got it. And we were supposed to take action on that yesterday, but since she didn't have it, we couldn't. So she's going to be sending it to you today or last night?
Yes.
And then we have to take action on it by before next Monday, so we're meeting at three o'clock Friday afternoon, okay?
Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, November twenty-third at nine AM. And at one o'clock that afternoon, you tentatively have an inpatient psychiatric bed tracking study ready by Zoom for Jack. Still pending, they haven't confirmed it with me yet, so. The business I have today is we have an application to appoint somebody to the, the Jackson County Pioneer Cemetery Commission. And he's been working with them for some time, his name is David Kuhn. And I am looking for a motion to appoint him to that commission for a term to expire twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, Sarah said we need to fill the current vacancy and then if we choose to, we'll reappoint him again for a new term in January.
I don't know David or, but he's been working with you, so the commission?
Yes, yeah, yes. And then Cemetery Commission approved appointing him, so I usually make sure they're okay with it first.
Approve him to the term that expires from there. I guess it's almost like a probation period. What's he got, two months or months and a half, what?
And I have another application for that commission as well, but I'm waiting.
Application.
Yeah, that's great.
I would second that motion.
Motion in a second to appoint David Kuhn to the Pioneer Cemetery to fill an unexpired term of previous member, all those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carry.
And he's fulfilling the Ken Wright's term because he's been off for a while, so, yeah, filled that one first. I have not gotten any applications for any other boards or commissions, so the vacancy list, as I gave you before, still stands.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, Lisa, are you ready to?
I am. This morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November ninth, twenty twenty-one board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So.
A motion in a second to approve the publication of the minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carry.
Motion needed to approve a handwritten warrant to Michael Burke to rewrite an electronic warrant for eighteen dollars.
Second. Is it a rush on that or something?
I guess there was an issue with his ACH and so it's just, we had approved it. I guess there was another issue again, so we're actually having an issue with, with that. I, I'm, I don't know.
A motion in a second to approve the handwritten warrant, all those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carry.
Motion needed to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the October twentieth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Did you have a chance to read them, that everybody have a chance to read? I guess I have some questions in there. That concerns me a little bit and one was that someone come to the board and I don't ever recall anybody.
She did not come to the board, she came to me personally. And I met with her, I met with Becky and then Becky was going to carry, carry over and discuss things with her. So all she did was talk to me about her concerns. I shared those concerns with Becky, Becky also had talked with her and that's the last I heard till I see, see the minutes.
It was noted in those, in those minutes also that there was a mention of my name to it. The reason then I suggested that she work from home is, this was during the height of COVID. She had just had a baby and I said, you know, for the next two weeks, why don't you just work from home, you know, do it remotely.
Well, she was having some issues also, correct?
Well, I'm just, so, I mean, that was why I said work from home, that's not noted in the minutes, but just, I did say that because of COVID.
I, I wasn't happy with the accusations that were shown that towards somebody, I guess, that's what I was.
Which one are you looking at?
Veterans Affairs.
Veterans Affairs.
I handed that out this morning, yeah.
Because I have. See, when did we talk about it?
I honestly, I got it yesterday afternoon, it was handed to me. And, and you know, I think with the changeover from one director to another and.
Yeah.
But yes, I was handed this yesterday afternoon.
I did talk with the individual, she said it was confidential. And so I, and she had told me that she had already talked with Becky. And I said that I would probably talk to Becky and I did, and then Becky said that she would delve into it a little more and that's the last I heard.
Well, I certainly hope everything got worked out, I, I just, you know, if, if, if the minutes claim that someone come to the board and I'd never heard anything of it, then to me, the board is the board. If she comes to you, that's fine.
It does on the back page that you talked to Jack.
Yeah, I see. I would certainly make a motion to place on file.
A motion in a second to place on file the Veterans Affairs Minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carry.
Motion needed to approve a Class C native wine permit without door service and Sunday sales to Iowa Grapevines Winery LLC at eighteen three forty-five fifty-fifth Street, Macocana, effective November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one through November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
With a motion in a second to approve the Class C native wine permit for Iowa Grapevines, all those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carry.
Motion needed to approve the ownership amendment of a Class C native wine permit without door service and Sunday sales to the Tabor Family, Family Winery LLC at thirty-five seventy sixty-seventh Street Baldwin, effective August seventh, twenty twenty-one through August sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Is amendment something different than what we always do?
You've already approved the liquor license, but they're changing the ownership of the liquor, of the establishment. So they're just amending the liquor license for that ownership change.
Okay, I would move to approve.
Good motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I.
I'm going to skip my item A and I would like to go to item B. I would like to discuss with you today an email that I received from Renal Clark at KCAP. I just, I, I talked to her on Friday when I was off and I thought it was kind of. I thought it was kind of, a few things were kind of interesting. This is the email that I gave you is what what's highlighted in yellow here on this email. I, there's a, the first question here um is about they'd like to put in a new dishwasher. They want to know, we need to give them approval to do that. Um, I thought this was interesting that the board supervisors have been the ones pushing us to do something about the floor covering. I don't believe it was you as a board that. They came to us for the flooring. We didn't go to them, so I I think that needs to be clarified.
Well, I think before HACAP took over, and it was Operation New View. We talked about putting flooring in, and then the HACAP came into the picture. And they said that they probably would be money from the Kansas City Office to do that. And they said they wanted it done before the school started this fall.
Right.
Well, that didn't happen. And so I I talked to Jane um a while back about the floor.
Yeah.
And she said it had not been replaced yet, and she said that they indicated that. They were gonna get some money to do it. So when I saw this this morning, I thought, what the hell is going on?
Excuse me. Yeah, no, I I think we both thought the same thing, because I, I mean, I had been down there and and did a walkthrough with Jane and some other people from the Cedar Rapids office. And I thought it was their desire, because if you go back when, and like you said. Leaving, going from the Operation New View side to the HACAP side, whoever was the interim in between. I think we discussed then, they were gonna try and do it over the Christmas break.
Right.
And maybe we're gonna do it over the summertime, and we were trying to.
First, we decided we were gonna do it when they were closed for the COVID. That was in twenty twenty when we decided to do that, and it just kept going on. Who is Mitch Flynn? Do we, do you know Mitch Flynn?
I do not. I have never spoke to him.
So it says that I assume you already informed the board. Well, I've never heard of no dishwasher.
I believe Mitch Flynn is the fiscal officer for HACAP.
Oh, okay.
He's one of, he's one of the. It's usually it was, wasn't it Mitch and Jane that would meet with us?
Yeah, after that floor, weren't we digging on that from an insurance company or something or the?
HACAP or whoever was gonna pay for it.
There were some broken tiles, and we were told we needed to replace it.
Okay, that was it.
I remember the interim person coming here. Whoever that, I remember that was like in the fall.
So if I remember correctly, also, there was some asbestos glue involved in it, that they were gonna get money so they could, they could afford to replace it. We talked about covering it at one time.
I guess I don't understand.
Okay.
The wording in this.
Okay.
And as far as the dishwasher goes, are they, are they buying a new dishwasher and putting it in? Do we need to touch base with Marty and say, yeah, you're okay with this?
From my discussion with Renell on Friday morning was that she had contacted Marty, and Marty did not want to answer any of the questions, so. I said I would call Renell. It's my understanding that they're not asking for funding for the dishwasher that they have. I think they were gonna purchase it on their own. I think what they have right now is a portable one. From what I remember through the walkthrough, when we went down there, I think there was a portable one that they have to keep moving back and forth tonight. This is the way that this reads. And yes, there is a grease trap down there that we have to maintain. That's one of our grease traps.
So when they touched base or contacted Marty, he didn't want to answer questions, though. What were the questions? Was it concerning, can they replace the dishwasher? Or is it something to do with the mechanical side of it and the grease trap that would affect the grease trap or something?
I can't answer that, because I wasn't in on that conversation.
Well, I guess I would say if they want to replace the dishwasher with a new quasi-commercial one, go ahead.
Okay, so I will respond as, yes, you can install a new dishwasher. Okay.
If it doesn't affect the rest of our equipment, you know, as far as the grease trap, we gotta move it or.
Wherever they hook that dishwasher up to it, it has to go through that grease trap, so that's important.
Well, we're not moving the grease trap. How's that?
So it needs to be.
I will put that in the email as we're not moving the grease trap.
And I don't know if the grease trap carries the whole building or if it's just a designated.
I think just for the.
It would just be for the head start.
Head start side.
Okay.
The kitchen part of head.
Have any.
Right.
Any.
Right.
Grease on the other side.
That's correct. There's no kitchen except for the head start side. So I will tell them that, yes, they can install a new dishwasher, but the grease trap cannot be moved. Okay, so then number two they talk about, um, and again. I don't know much. I just remember what we've learned from the hospital and the jail and such as far as. The ancil system as far as stove foods and such. Um, I have, again, I have, I have not spoken to anybody concerning this. And and I'm not sure who the person recently retired, so I'm not really sure who they're talking about in this email. Obviously, I'm still here. I'm working, so I haven't retired. Mallory Smith is still working for the city of McOcotah. I don't know if they're talking about potentially if it was um. You know, not Elizabeth's position. I don't think, I tried talking to Elizabeth yesterday, and.
You think they talked to Kimberly?
That's what I wondered if they've talked to Kimberly, but. I don't, honestly, I don't think that this is a county issue. I think this may be more of a state question than a county question.
Well, they certainly need to know what they need to comply with as far as their safety issues or rules and regulations to comply.
So again, I think this might be a state question because of the state inspector would be my suggestion.
I I would guess we could ask. Elizabeth, maybe if there's anything that she would know about that, but.
Again, I would think that that would be a food inspection question.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, again. And kind of going back to the top of the next page. Having Marty prepare the floor for us to lay down new new covering.
I I don't ever recall that being an agreement.
Okay, and again, nobody's talked to me about this.
I guess that the only time that was talked about was when we were gonna replace it, and Marty was gonna do some of the work. But then that all changed when he kept took over.
Yeah, so I assume again that they've talked to Till's floor covering, and. Do you want Marty to do some stuff?
No, no, he has too much to do.
So. To my remembrance of it, that was this, we had talked to one of the floor coming people, and they talked about covering the floor, covering this.
Yeah.
Whatever was there, and you would probably need to do some leveling, but I I don't think that's Marty's baby either way.
Okay.
You know.
Okay.
And they say that they got till on here, but there's somebody else in town that does these spring down floors or roll down, like garage floors.
Systems like board floors.
And.
They're called a, not a torganol either, but they're, it used to be like a torganol type floor.
And they look really nice.
And they're really durable, yeah.
And they're completely, I mean, seamless, which would be perfect.
I think what I remember is whoever was the interim that they did not want carpeting. Because uh, what I remember, they did not want carpeting. They wanted something that was, could easily be cleaned.
And that, that's an excellent product, I think, like for Bruce D'Antonio's office, put that in there for the floor. We had somebody come in and do the whole floor with that and.
So the question I would have then, is that the board's desire? Is that their decision?
I think it's their decision, but we could, we could certainly, who's paying for it? That's the way.
They, if they, if, I mean, if they knew that there was somebody in our town that did that, I would think they would want to get a bid.
We would certainly like them to consider that as an option. It seems to be low maintenance, easy to clean up.
And very durable.
Something like TSR coatings or something.
Yeah.
Okay, I was, I was.
I mean, a lot of people do it in their gridges. My son did it in his basement cement floor, because sometimes he gets a little water, and it's a perfect, it literally looks nice. The schools, the Belvey School did it too in their breezeway.
And it's got just enough texture on it where it's not slippery with a sweater and anything like that, too. So it's really a good product.
Okay. Then the last one they talk about are some cabinets and such?
Never heard of that either.
No, I didn't either. I would say if they want to put new cabinets in, go right ahead, but it's at their expense.
And no Marty again.
No Marty, no.
Okay, I will, I will relay that.
Oh, will you talk to Jane or will you talk to Renell?
Uh, it was Renell that I talked to on Friday. So I will do that. Also, just wanted to let you know that yesterday. Yesterday, we, I signed a participation agreement for the opioid um agreement. So that is moving forward. I did have County Attorney Sarah Davenport review this. She said, yes, we had to have this signed by January second of next year. And so Jackson County is signed up. We have agreed to participate. I signed the documentation paperwork yesterday, so just so you know. And I think. That is all, the only thing that I do have left is to do a second tier canvas today for. The November second, twenty twenty-one combined city school election. You know, we did canvas, did our first year canvas last week. What happens today is after last week's canvas, um, if we have. Uh, school districts or cities that uh go into another county. Last week, Eastern Valley School District was also canvassed here in Jackson County. It was also canvassed in Jackson County. All of that information from the two counties are put together to come up with today's canvas, and.
You mean Jackson and Clinton?
Jackson, Clinton. Well, you know. You know, yeah. So anyway, for the Eastern Valley School District, it was Clinton-Jackson. For the McOcotah School District, it was Jackson-Clinton. And thank you, Jackson-Clinton and um. So Dubuque County, um, canvas McOcotah School District last week, so then Clinton, and this is the point that we're at today. And I have, just like last week, I have certificates, I have abstracts, I have the canvas to be signed by you. I will tell you that the Eastern Valley School District that in one particular race, the difference is two votes. And that did not change from election night. So. It will be, one of the phone calls that I did this this morning, I did visit with Joseph Kilburg. He is the, is not the apparent winner. He is not, after today, Jody Kil, Jody Meyer will be declared the winner by two votes. So Jody Meyer had two hundred and sixty votes, Joseph Kilburg had two hundred and fifty-eight with the combined between Clinton and Jackson County. So Jody Meyer will be declared the winner. The clock does tick now. Uh, Joseph Kilburg, I did visit with him this morning. He will need to make a decision to say. This was fun. It was a good experience. I lost by two votes. Today, we're done. He has three days, he has until Friday at five o'clock to decide if he would like to have a recount. And I visited with him about that this morning. There are two ways that you can do a recount. You can do a machine recount, or you can do a hand recount. In Jackson County, we would have to hand recount six precincts.
How many votes? Well, the five minutes, yeah, two sixteen, two sixteen.
Two sixty, two fifty-eight, so yeah, five hundred, overall, five hundred and sixty-six with the undervotes and the scatterings and such.
Well, basically, I mean, the fee request that we'd have to do that.
Absolutely, we have to do it. Yep. So that's where we're at with that. It's his decision. And that's why it's important, as before the meeting here, when we had these students in here, people really do need to understand. Every vote counts, and in this, two, two, maybe two people chose not to vote, maybe two people. Decided to do a write-in for Mickey Mouse or Donald Duck, but as candidates, we rely on.
So we would still today certify that election and then he requests a recount, then we start over again with.
That is correct. Now, just as a point, I will tell you that I will be in Des Moines on Thursday and Friday. And that's why I visited with him. Should he want to do something, I need to be able to have all the paperwork lined up before I leave to go to my Des Moines meetings. So I guess stay tuned. As far as he did indicate one way or the other, um, you know, traditionally, the recounts that we've done here in Jackson County. Our vote totals have not changed. We have done it before, which is a good thing, so.
Yes.
Yes, it's up to him. So um, if everything is, is just like last week, I would need a motion to authorize the board as canvassers. To certify and authorize board signatures on the true and correct abstracts of votes cast in Jackson County. I think that probably should be Jackson and Clinton County at the November second, twenty twenty-one city school election. For the school districts of Eastern Valley and McOcotah, as shown by the official abstract and further authorize. Chair signature and certificates of the election and authorize Auditor Smith to forward abstracts and certificates.
So move.
A motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I motion carry.
And just like last week, I do have some signing that you need to do. Not years long, but I do. Uh, and with that, and that's all that I have for the board today.
Well, your item C is need to call John Hanson after the meeting to discuss the building and jail. I understand, I I I don't think I'm wrong. That the architect and John are both going to be in McOcotah tomorrow to meet with Together We Build. So maybe we should call and see if. We could either meet, if you, if we need to meet with him, see if we could meet prior to that meeting. I think that's at six o'clock. Um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be here, but um, if you guys, somebody wants to talk to him, I'm perfectly fine with that.
I don't know what time he's coming, but um. I mean, we did talk to him last week, of course, and we talked to him about getting hold of the contractors for the concrete work. And I had some of them at my place yesterday, and they have not been contacted.
And it's getting to the point where.
And why, why is it that he needs to have control of this project? Why can't we just do it, get it done?
Well, he's the construction manager for that project. I would think he should definitely get that done.
Wish I tried calling him. When the meeting's over.
We can try to contact him and see if he has time.
He called me yesterday, and he said that he would be available after the meeting was over. He just wants to kind of make sure that everybody's on the same page. As far as timelines.
I wish he was on our page.
I mean, yeah, tomorrow afternoon's fairly busy.
I will be in transit to Des Moines. I would not be available.
And I'll be in, have a thin season.
Yeah. We prefer to do most of the bulk of our driving in the daylight, hopefully when Bambi's not running.
Or they're still out there.
Yeah, we like to get to Des Moines before and get ahead of the traffic and the deer.
We do not have a security meeting tomorrow, though, right?
No, it's in January, I think. Six months now.
I I think we can touch base here after the meeting a little bit with John.
Um, boards and commissions.
Uh, we did have a nine-one-one last week, and we're, we are proceeding forward with. On the equipment as far as being installed, and they're testing as far as the microwave length from the tower here to out on six or in the Cave Road. And we discussed. With a little bit about phase two, how we're gonna implement. And as far as who's buying the radios, if East Municipality and Porsche EMS. Are buying their own, we would like a little more information. We know that Motorola has a contract with the state. That's not to say that that's the radios that everybody wants to buy. So we're gonna have our consultant come back in and give us a little. Info of what might be if we want to put an RFP out for radios. And you know, some might like Kenwood, some might like Harris. More, you know, and it's not to say that we need double band frequency radios for all these units either. They can get by if we're switching over to the seven, eight hundred meg, we get by with that. Again, it's. Very complicated to explain, but it's, we thought it'd be best for us to do our due diligence and. Put it out for, you know, get some info on it from our consultant, who's been very good to us and. Who's been very good to us and. We, we don't know if that's covered in our current contract or not. And then yesterday we had a waste authority and that was, um, again, they're moving forward with the scale process. Um, they did have an accident out there, gentlemen. Actually fell off the back of his pickup, um. Lot backwards on his, on his back and hit his head, so. We discussed briefly and and maybe the, the employees out there need some. Basic EMS or CPR type training, so. That's gonna be discussed, maybe, um, Ryan, give, give them a little bit of training too somehow and certify some CPR and. You know, just because you, you have different. Different groups coming in there. And we talked about, of course, they're gonna be closed for three or four days and hopefully that's in January, but it's not been confirmed. So that we get it out on the internet and and social media that everybody knows and put up signs to say. Four days.
So, but regardless, they'd be taking it somewhere else for those days and.
I guess it's up to them to take a stockpile at a certain point or, you know, for three days or if they're missing one route or something like that. Or if they take it somewhere else, I guess that's their. We talked about trying to come off too few, if they're putting a little lane in, it just wasn't feasible to try to.
I actually thought that the. Email that you received from the auditor of state was.
I forwarded that to you for a purpose and I didn't know how to take that. I don't know if Mr. Conservative is getting really conservative here or if it's something that they need to do. So we got an email, the Waste Authority got an email from. State auditor saying. Stating, um, that normally. They would do their audit. But they're not doing it. They don't have the staff and and they suggest that, uh, they hire a private company to do their audit.
Really? Well, I have to say that from the county standpoint. Um, we do have the state auditors do our audit. And we were supposed to save so much money because they were doing it. They weren't traveling here and we didn't have the hotel and the mileage and. And our audit was forty two thousand dollars. I don't think we saved anything. It was higher this time.
Oh, God. And that was, that was the. That's what they said.
Yeah, so.
I mean, for. RTA and stuff, we hired that time.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm sure the CPA offices around that they'll do that. I. I guess they just have to prepare for it. I don't know what it was caused, some state either. They charge.
I don't know that, yeah.
It was an email that come through and I was, I thought it was rather interesting, so I thought. Share that with you to. Get your thoughts on that at some point.
But there again, isn't. That's their job.
To do, to, to offer that service, I, I was a thought so for government and municipalities or entities.
The amount of hours that, when you look at their billing, the amount of hours that they put into our audit. It's extensive.
So it's a little out of proportion.
But we shouldn't have any travel time. We shouldn't have. Yeah.
Maybe they forgot that.
So Frank is actually gonna look into it, see what his options might be.
When you look at Operation New View.
I.
They were just worthless. I mean, I don't know what the hell they're doing, but they can tell us the story of what was going on.
The second reason I sent it to you, I thought maybe we could. Combine some departments or entities and say, maybe we get a better rate if we get.
Yeah, I mean.
One person to do it. I, I don't.
We have. Prior, we have done, had private companies come in and do our audit.
Is that RFP?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have done that in the past. We've had several. Uh, auditing firms come in to do our county audit and then we went back to. The state having them do it. So I mean, we, we have done that. You really need to choose. A company that has done county audits, you know.
Okay. You have a private company do your audit, does the state look at it and accept it or say, no, that's not good enough?
They've accepted it in the past.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean.
Because as long as all the boxes are checked, so to speak.
At least they're overseeing.
Cause you would already have an accounting firm that did it and certified, you know. I, I think it's good cause for thoughts.
I guess that's basically the group's hours in here for as far as reports that I have.
Workforce, we meet this afternoon. Um, early childhood Iowa, we, um, met yesterday and we have, um. Met one other time. Our project right now is submitting the community plan where, um. I have it here. She sent me a copy of it to review. Um, we'll have a meeting next Monday to approve that. But Peggy's doing a really good job taking over from. The former director Gwen. But, um, she's very conscientious and very thorough and. She, she knows her business, so we're lucky with that. I'm not gonna report on, um, the mental health meeting since we're having another meeting on Friday. And Lynn couldn't come today because they have a, a meeting, a management team meeting down in Davenport this morning.
I would really like to, I've been invited, one of my eight meetings of this week that I have. I really would like to participate, uh, in the meeting, so I really do need to leave. Um, I'd like to leave here by eleven thirty so we can get down there, but we are having a meeting at twelve thirty. And I would like to participate in that.
I think that the. Um, management team was meeting earlier and then they said.
Yes.
And that's because of the merging of the funds.
Need to have a discussion.
And so they're gonna kind of work through the process and. How it'll do, um, how that'll happen, so. Um, it's okay with the board, Lynn and I'll report on her yesterday's meeting next week since she's not able to be here today. Anything from you?
So judicial was last Friday. So the COVID mandate thing, federal. Is a complication because we have federal prisoners in there and. Basically comes down to if we don't comply, we lose the federal. Inmates and if that happens, our budget doesn't fly. So there's some concern. I think they're fairly high. I think it was seventy or almost eighty percent are vaccinated.
So question is.
Well, that's a question that a lot of them are trying to answer. As far as if it's legal. Can't call it a mandate anymore, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Person date. I, I see there was an outbreak in one of the prisons somewhere. I read that and.
That's a touchy, I mean. Get away from it or do whatever.
And, and how do they?
Yeah. I mean, they keep saying, well, it's getting better. Well, it's not. I mean, there's a lot of people that. All over thousands a day or two. To me, it's simple. Take the shot and get on with your life. I don't know, it's still, it's still a lot of people are. We went through this nineteen sixty four when they mandated. Seat belts. Oh my God, if I run off the road and land in the river, I won't be able to get out of the car because seatbelt, like, you know, if you run off the road and hit. You're not be halfway through the windshield. I mean, and everybody, I mean, everybody just accepts it now.
Yeah.
Because it's. Yeah. Ninety nine point nine percent of the time you don't need it, but at one, one time. And a friend of mine, um, she, she just had all three shots. And they both came down with COVID and she ended up here. And I don't know what goes on here, but from here, they, the only bed they could find was in. Oh, Western Iowa somewhere and they.
Ranelle. Is she in Ranelle?
Yeah. They threw her out there. Luckily, she's. Transitioned through and hopefully she'll be out on Thursday. But surely, uh, right. Um, but I mean, even with the three shots, I mean, now to me. If she wouldn't have had those shots, she probably, you know, it would not have been good because I mean, she had some other issues too. But we need to get this thing. Knocked down. I mean, it's been going on too long. We've got the highest death rate. In the world for a country. Even the underdevelopments when they're only three and four percent vaccinated, but. As they said, they have younger people, you know, their populations are small and they don't move around like we. Have their own villages and stuff and be. Pretty local, you know, we're just all over and people from every.
Very mobile.
Yeah. I don't know. I mean, yeah, everybody's got their rights, but it comes down to. You know, you gotta think about somebody else besides yourself too sometimes.
Yeah. Okay, um. I guess between Lisa and Luanne, I know Luanne, you've been working, starting to get budget stuff. When is our first? Look at the new budget. I think end in December.
So Shelley has, uh, sent out budget sheets to everybody and. I'm going to guess that things haven't been returned. It's been probably pretty slow. I wouldn't expect anything until at least the first week of December when people are really starting to think about their budgets and. Um, I have visited with Marty about a few items. You know, we're just, we're a little bit early yet, you know, I would hope that we could kind of get going. First or second week of December.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If there's no other business, the motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
It's been moved in second to all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.